Okay, we've got six thirty-one. We'll go ahead and call them in to order. For sure, business is a public hearing, so we'll go ahead and open that up also at six thirty-one. And I'll just read the notice. We don't currently have anybody here, but we'll leave it open for a couple of minutes in case anybody wanders in. So the Pepper School District will hold a public hearing on January two, twenty twenty-four, at six thirty PM at Pembroke Academy to discuss withdrawing eighteen thousand, two hundred thirty-one dollars from the Equipment, Installation, and Labor Expendable Trust Fund for a replacement mower, and further to discuss withdrawing of thirty-three thousand, one hundred forty-five dollars, thirty-five cents from the Vehicle Expendable Trust Fund for a new truck, beacon light, and decals, and to further discuss withdrawing twenty-six thousand, two hundred sixty-three dollars and fourteen cents from the Technology Trust Fund for servers and wireless access points, and to further discuss withdrawing twenty-six thousand, one hundred seven, I'm sorry, twenty-six thousand, one hundred dollars, seventy-one cents from the Hill School Edition Renovation Trust for Architectural Services. Open the public hearing. As I said, there's nobody in attendance quite yet. I'll give it five minutes. And if nobody has arrived, we will accept a motion to close the public hearing. Oh, yes.
Above it. I actually thought most of the way through, oh, man, I haven't messed up word yet. They never had that number.
So I just want to bring to your attention, there is one project that is not complete, and that's of the phone system and the intercom system. So we are going to wait until we get the final bill. There's, I think, is it your PA intercoms they're still working on? It was one thing. They were still finishing up. I think it was PA. And that's about a hundred and three thousand dollar project. So as soon as that's complete and we have all of the invoices, we'll need to do another public hearing. And then for the Hill renovation, those are for the architects invoices up to the month of October. So we already have a couple in. Those come in monthly. So we'll wait a little bit, and then we'll have another public hearing for those. So I just wanted you to know there were still some outstanding things still taking place.
Started counting the seconds, so we'll see how close I am. Yeah, I came, but then realized there's best looking. It's more fun. All right, it's six thirty-six. I will accept the motion to adjourn the public hearing. Second. All right, all in favor, please say aye. All right, public hearing is closed at six thirty-six. Is there a motion? Does somebody want a copy of that paper to make motion or just accept the? So to accept the withdrawals. Appropriate. Someone make a motion to accept them.
We'll approve the withdrawals from the trust funds listed on that paper.
All right, is there a second? All right, any discussion? Right, then, all in favor approving the trust fund withdrawals as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Okay. Next, we have public comment, but it looks like we will go ahead and skip that as well since if no one in attendance. General review, so there's not much on here. We basically have minutes, budget committee update, budget review, and the warrant. Anything to add?
I have one item to add. You may have seen in the drive, and that is not a gift or donation, but under number seven, it's a grant.
Anything from the board to add? Sure, we'll do eight, eight D. Anything else? Okay, we'll move on to number five. We've got minutes from twelve, five and twelve nineteen. Take a motion for both or one if there's corrections. All right, is there a second? Any corrections? So just for the record, I'm going to abstain because I wasn't here on the nineteenth. I'm cool with the minutes from the fifth, but just abstain on the vote. Anything else?
No, I think we're good.
All right, then, all in favor of approving the minutes of December fifth, twenty twenty-three, and December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? I have an abstention. Nothing on number six, so we've got a grant to discuss.
So Bill is remote with us, I believe. If anyone has questions, we can unmute him and he can answer them. But the limited information I have, Kelly Antinarella was made aware of this grant. It's the Connect Safely Safer Internet Day twenty twenty-four grant in the amount of one thousand dollars. So she applied for that on behalf of Three Rivers, and they were awarded that grant. So just want the board to acknowledge and accept that, even though it's not a donation.
Okay, motion to approve or motion to accept, at least for discussion.
I'll make a motion to accept.
All right, is there a second? Right, any discussion? It's a, it's a day. It's like a program where people come in or something. Anything else? All in favor of accepting the grant, one thousand dollars, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, on to number eight. Gene, I guess, is there anything from NBC?
Had a meeting Thursday before Christmas, and basically it was for me to update NBC as to where we were with the budget. They're very appreciative that they got their budget binders before Christmas, so they could spend all their free time studying those numbers. And pretty much that's about it. On Thursday of this week, we'll be having Amber in and Patty to present the budget to the NBC. So anybody out there in the audience wants to attend, that's what will be going on.
Any questions for Gene about NBC? All right, then we have a twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Look or update as well. Anything to highlight?
Really, the, so at the last meeting, the board approved all of the cuts with the exception of the positions, I think. So Amber had put everything in so that the NBC would have the most updated from your meeting on Tuesday. She was able to get that done on Wednesday, so they had that on Thursday. So what is in your budget binders includes all of those cuts that you approved. There's, you haven't taken any action yet, so I'm not sure if you're ready to kind of go through the warrant again and make recommendations on those. All the numbers are in there. The paraprofessional agreement numbers are in for all four years, and there's a blank budget number at this point. And I think we got the other ones edited and in the order that you wanted them, so you can check through those. And if you want to do your recommendations tonight, you can certainly do that.
Okay. We have a separate agenda item for the warrant, so I guess. If anybody's got comments on the budget, let's talk it out, and then we'll try to get some sort of consensus here.
So the one area of the budget that we are still having conversations about was special education. So I just want to make sure the board is aware that Jess is here, but she's going to talk to you in non-public session because you are entitled to more details that can't be made public. And then she will be attending an NBC meeting where the rest of the community can get some detail regarding the special ed budget without, you know, without identifying any student-specific information. So Jess will do that with you in non-public session.
Thanks for being here, and thanks for doing that for NBC. I know they appreciate it.
Want to check that number? She's got this talking. Never mind. No, 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 I was looking at, when I was looking at the warrant, I had remembered the one eighty-five, but I forgot you corrected me, or the one sixty-five, I forgot you had corrected, so, yeah.
If anybody has anything, jump right in. I'm just messing around and trying to find last year's tax impact sheet and a few other things I probably should have finished before now. Sure.
Just remind you, before you vote on the bottom line, when the proposed budget after the cuts is, shows an increase to the budget of three point three million dollars. But I do just want to remind you that the, on the bottom of page fifty, yep, fifty-six in the budget, there's six hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in grants and seven hundred sixty-three thousand in food service. So that's a significant amount that's included in that because you are required to raise and appropriate the funds for those two sections. However, it's offset by revenue, so it doesn't impact the tax rate. So just keep that in mind when you, that that's a pretty significant amount of money in, in those two areas. And we were, we're required to raise and appropriate the funds for those.
So just to sanity check, so the budget increases around three point three million. The appropriations, right? Thirty-four point zero nine three this year compared to thirty point seven seven nine last year. And it looks like revenues are projected to actually be down like two hundred K. Page ninety, ninety-four last year. Well, I mean, this was that tax rate setting last year, so I'm not sure what the actuals are. And the budgeted number last year for revenue is sixteen million, eight hundred fifteen thousand, and this year it's sixteen million, six hundred thirty thousand. So it's, so then that means net amount to be raised by taxes is going to actually increase by three point five million, right? So. I got you. So that's where Jerry gets twenty-four percent increase, is net amount to be raised by taxes. So that was fourteen and changed last year, and it's looking like closer to seventeen and a half this year.
Right. So, but I can look at the food servicing grant monies, the food servicing grant service expenditures. And essentially, when tax rate setting time comes around, we can take that off that bottom line. Right?
How much is it against? Two?
One point four.
It should already be figured in.
Oh, never mind.
On ninety-four. All right. It's actually a positive. Yeah, it is. And I don't even have the editable one. I'm just winging it. So that negative one eighty-five is actually positive three thirty-six. Okay, so that changes something. So we've got, we actually have like three, three, one, four, four, six, seven, minus six. So it's actually two, two point, well, basically a three million dollar increase, not a three point five million dollar increase.
Yeah.
Two point nine, seven, eight. Which is, wow. Twenty percent increase, not a twenty-four percent increase. Right? Okay. So I mean, I have a lot of work to do with this to conceptualize it and put it in something presentable for public hearings slash March meeting. But at this point, I guess we have to have the decision, the discussion of, you know, are we at a, is it is what it is point, or do we want to look deeper at if we can save some money somewhere along that line? I'm wondering, is, I'm assuming that the, they call it the contingency budget, is a calculation that just has to be done somewhere along the way anyway. We have to know what that is in case our budget doesn't pass. If all budget, thank you. You know, all right, that's just, that's me too.
That's why we'll probably need to be prepared like we were a couple of years ago with a cut sheet, so that when people stand up, we have it totaled and we let them know if you cut a hundred thousand dollars, this is what we will, because the board's in charge of what gets cut, not, not the community. So you can have a prioritize list to make people aware of, you know, if we were to cut two hundred thousand, three hundred, four hundred, what your order of priorities would be.
Okay, so can we, can we, if people have comments, let's do that. But if we could, if you don't mind, I'd like to go around just quick and get a straw poll, sort of like, are we at, we want to put this budget forward but be prepared, as Patty just said? Do we want to, or do we want to work harder right now and in the next meeting or two to find stuff on our own that we want to take out? I guess that's a decent starting place. Melanie? I just always start at one of the ends. I try to randomize it. I mean, if anybody's got, everybody wants to jump in, that's fine, too. I don't.
I'd like to see if there's something else that we could, but I feel like there's not. So I'm willing to hear what everybody else has to say, but I'm willing to do the work if we need to find more stuff to cut. I don't think we should start a parade and say, start budget. I think we need to do some work if we can somehow.
Gene? I was having the thought that I'd like to hear what Jess has, what input Jess has on this before we move forward on of, you know, moving forward with this. I mean, we could possibly change it up and do the non-public now and then come back to this. Because I, I, I will be quite honest, I don't want, you know, the special ed population versus a whole school population. You know, we're taking from the whole school population where, and not impacting the minority of the school population at all. We're impacting the majority versus a minority, and I'd like to see if we can find some kind of happy medium where, you know, the cuts we put on the sheet can be, you know, well, I mean, moving the stuff that's under ESSER funds forward for next year, we're going to have to come up with that money. So I think we have to look how to be, look into the special ed budget to see if there is any wiggle room in there, and I'd like to do that before.
Fair enough. Move forward on this. Sorry, we stole your mic.
For being late. I think that we should move forward with this budget as it is. I have no problem with the timing of hearing the presentation, the non-public presentation on special ed, and then moving forward with it afterwards. But I think we have done the prudent cuts. I think this is the amount of money needed to fund an adequate educational system in our school district next year, given the current circumstances. It's my personal opinion that the state of New Hampshire does not appropriately fund public education, but I don't think that we can have our students suffer their educational opportunities as a result. And I think we have to put forward this budget.
Right, Gary?
I, I do, I agree with Animi saying, you know, we want to, we've done some cuts. We, we should probably move forward with it, but I also don't want to at least not give it a good old try and just see if there's some things, even, you know, little things that we might be able to find that might add up to big things for us. So I think maybe a little bit of work on it.
Right. And I think currently, I mean, definitely, I think hearing from Jess versus is a really good idea. Personally, I'm kind of feeling like I'm, I want to take this to the town. And it used to be, in, in better years, maybe, I would say I want to take this to the town because I really, really feel good about it, and I really, I can stand up there and defend this. And I, I don't feel that way. But I feel like we've done the work that we need to do, and we should take this to the town more in the sense of it's the town's decision. And I think, I, I feel more this year like I'm just giving you the information. I'm telling you that this is what we need to run the schools. But I also understand that that's a very large increase, and so you all need to make that decision. And I'm not sure, I mean, I, I look at this too many times between now and February anyway. I'm just not confident that we're going to find anything that, that makes a significant difference. So. So do we want to do non-public now, or do we want to take care of the warrant, the new non-public and surplus act? It's up to everybody. I don't. Get the warrant done? Okay. Good with everybody? Okay, so let's table this for a minute. We'll move on to, I think it's C. Choose the warrant. So just to recap for people at home without reading the whole thing, but so you can get an idea of what we're looking at here. Article number two will be the big budget. Article, article number three is the paraprofessionals collective bargaining agreement for four years. Article four is just a safety valve for article three. And then the rest are, are trust fund, either withdrawals or deposits based on projects that we have to do. I believe, are there any of these that are straight money? Are they all from? They're all from fund balance, aren't they? Oh. Yeah, I believe, I'm quite sure without reading all these really closely right now, that all of the deposits into trust funds are only done from surplus. If surplus exists at the end of the fiscal year, none of them should, will impact the tax rate. Correctly, I should say. There's some people that don't like that language. So thoughts, feelings, comments? I think that these are in the order. I went back and looked, and I'm pretty sure this matched my notes at least. Sometimes my handwriting's not great, so if anybody thinks that they're not in the order we discussed, let me know. Okay. Then I guess there's not much to do on this unless, unless and until we can put a number in number two. We can, or, I mean, I guess, do we think we're if I thought we were going to have a number for number two, I would say let's wait until the end of the meeting. But I, I guess I'm feeling wishy-washy that that's the case. So if everybody's good, we'll, we'll vote on the other articles right now. And then if we happen to have a number, we can come back to two tonight. If not, we can get it next time.
Can't remember. Do we have to vote individually, or can we just, for example, say, you know, move to approve the proposed warrant article with the exception of number two?
No, we have to vote on each article separately because the public actually sees the vote number.
Oh, right. Yep.
Yeah, from us and from NBC, so.
Well, yeah, can we just start at number one?
Well, number one's not a voting article. Number two's the budget number, so we'll skip that. So number three.
Well, I think we would start then at number, yeah, because we sort of already voted at number three, or do we re-vote that? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve number three.
Hey, any discussion? I'm sorry, is there a second?
A second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor of recommending article number three, which has to do with the Pepper paraprofessionals collective bargaining event? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, is there a motion on article four, which is not a money article, but just gives us a way to address number three if it should fail?
So moved.
Well, actually, since it's not a money, we don't vote. Yeah, sorry, my bad. So number five, to see if Pepper School District will vote and raise appropriate sum of forty thousand dollars for the school building capital reserve fund.
So moved.
All right, is there a second? Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of recommending article number five, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Article number six, to raise or appropriate the sum of a hundred thousand dollars to be added to the special education trust. Again, from under their fund balance. Is there a motion to recommend?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor of recommending article six, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, article number seven is to raise or appropriate the sum of a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to be Right, article number seven is to raise appropriate sum of a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to be added to the school building capital reserve fund. Again, from unassigned fund balance, a lot to be raised for taxation. Motion to recommend.
So moved.
Second. Second, any discussion on that one? All right, all in favor of recommending article seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Right. Article eight is to raise an appropriate sum of ten thousand dollars for the school technology expendable trust. Again, from unassigned fund balance. Uh, motion to recommend.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all of those in favor of recommending article eight, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Article nine is to raise appropriate sum of up to ten thousand dollars. Excuse me, to be added to the vehicle expendable trust fund. Um, again, from an assigned fund balance, uh, motion to recommend.
So moved.
Second. Second discussion. All those in favor of recommending article nine, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Right, article number 10 is to raise appropriate sum of twenty-five thousand dollars to be added to the equipment installation and labor expendable trust. Again, from unassigned fund balance. So motion to recommend.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, in favor of recommending article 10, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And lastly, article number 11 is to raise appropriate the sum of up to one hundred thousand dollars to be added to the site improvement expendable trust. Um, again, from unassigned fund balance. Is there a motion to recommend? So moved. Second.
Second.
Any discussion around that one? Then all in favor of recommending article 11, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or any abstentions? Okay, and I guess we'll take D right now as well. We added a D for the audit update. So in the spirit of keeping any public watching engaged, we'll go ahead and touch base on that. So I don't, Carrie, did you have specific questions or just looking for an update?
Um, I well, I was hoping for an update, but then I just had just a little sidebar that I'd like to just kind of share.
Um, so we had a handout that was prepared on November 30th, and I think it was pretty widely shared. We shared it with the um executive board. We shared it with all of the individual boards and I am pretty sure that I know Ashley put it on the website as well so that everyone could see it. Um, the difference, what the auditors had been giving us was just the most completed year that they had worked on. I asked them to map it out so that we could actually see through 2023, the estimated completion. So that's what they've done for each district. Um, and then today, someone in my office came in to let me know that um they're already working on 2023 that they've uploaded into the Dropbox every document that the auditors need to finish up. And they're already putting 2023 documents in there. So we're in really good shape and we've now scheduled them for four more weeks in January. So they're gonna they're gonna be here a ton in January to try to get us finished up. So um, they're, you know, they had to stop, slow down a little bit to do their clients from closing from the fiscal year 23. And now they're uh moving along really quickly again.
Great.
So I just wanted to um kind of come at this from the treasurer side of things as though I did it for a very short period of time. Um, I've been watching the NBC meetings online and I think the there's some blame being placed in the wrong places. And I I just want it to be kind of on the record that the treasurer is in charge of reconciling the books. They are in charge of providing monthly reconciliations to the business office. They are not in charge of the audits. They are not the people that push for the audits. They are not the people who gather the information. Though there is a piece that is given to the auditors from the treasurer. Um, myself, the treasurer before me, we both were not able to in impartially because these audits weren't done, we were not able to get those starting numbers we we needed. Or when reconciliations weren't clear, we were not able to kind of move forward. The current treasurer has done a phenomenal job. She has stepped in. She not only has reconciled her own treasurer year up to date. Um, she also went back and started fresh from my treasurer year and filled in the blanks of the stuff that I couldn't get and has now reconciled the 2022, 2023 uh, school year. So I just want to make sure that it's out there and it's publicly known that the treasurers are not the ones that are supposed to be pushing for these audits. The, you know, it comes from the business office and that that information is provided to the auditors through the business office. Yes, the treasurer has a small piece, but they do not, they do not spear uh steer the audits. That's all I wanted to say.
Right.
Thank you.
Um, so along those lines, as I saw some of that as well. I think it would be helpful and not necessarily soon because we've got budgets to deal with, but maybe after March. I'd love to have um the current treasurer in and I probably should have done this years and years ago. But just uh like from her point of view, what does she do? And so that we all have a little bit better idea of what that process looks like and what are uh, the treasure responsibilities and what aren't. Um, and to extend that, um, I don't know if this was worth it or not, but I'd love to know a little more what what um our clerk does too. And if Cindy's available sometime, you know, just to under, I know that it's publicly available, but I think it would just be good to hear from our people um that are elected officials of the district um once in a while to say, hey, what are you doing? How does it work? And is there anything more that we could do for you to make that easier? I think that would be worthwhile. Any other comments about audits? Yes.
A little bit more to the point of the substance of the audits in the communication that is the source of some of this discussion, there was a reference, I think, to the 2022 audit, which, when you read through it, some of the non-reconciliation recommendations are substantive in nature. And there was, you know, um, uh, maybe like a allegation type tone that people should be concerned about those recommendations. I've read enough audits in my time to know that they always have recommendations that, you know, bookkeeping can always be better. So I'm I'm not critically concerned about those recommendations. On the other hand, I do understand sort of the fiduciary role that this board holds. And I think once we are caught up on the audits, I would like to have some sort of reporting mechanism as to what the recommendations contained. And all of these audits, you know, um, that we're behind on have been, um, because I hope that, you know, some of the recommendations from the more overdue audits, maybe they've been cured in the um more recent audits. And so that's kind of moot. We don't need to waste time on that. Um, but if they're not, I would like to know why not and what the plan is and all that. And if there are newer recommendations, I'd like to know what those are and what the plan is to implement those. Um, so I would like to have that happen again, sort of in that March-ish, you know, I don't really care if it's Mar- March plus or minus two months. But I care more that we go through the process of um undertaking that oversight.
Yeah, I'd go so far as to say, we might want to look at updating our goal spreadsheet and have that be set like a full recap before the end of this year so that we all feel kind of comfortable where we're at with with all that stuff. Um, the one thing that I wanted to say, and I I hate saying stuff like this when I don't have a recommendation or a solution. But I have gotten comments from multiple people again um about the website and that those are posted, they're still really hard to find or access. Um, I don't know if there's any way to link them on a front page or make them available outside of SharePoint, which is usually the source of the headache. Um, but it's just a comment that I've received from a few people.
So I did talk to Ashley about making making sure that we have a mechanism to have to start a public drive so that we can start pulling things from Google and get rid of SharePoint. Um, and Josh assured me that that can happen. So that piece of it at least to try to get rid of SharePoint. And I I don't think she can go back, but from now on, whenever something is posted, we can make sure. Um, and the difficulty with the website is whatever people are interested in, they want front and center.
Right.
So and this is not meant to be critical. It's just the nature of the beast. So like everyone's thinking about the audits. So let's go to the website and where are they? Where are they? Where are they? And, you know, when we post things, we say, we, okay, we know all the categories of the website. So, hey, probably should put it in in budget information. Hey, this is a financial. So, you know, it sort of makes sense to us. But when the public comes, it, you know, it's hard to find. And I think Jean mentioned it was like at least three clicks to get there. Um, so when there is a hot topic, we can put it on the front page, and I think Ashley did that, and that makes sense. So if you're hearing something like that, that there's one thing right now that people are interested in, we can absolutely bump it to the front page just so that it's easy for them to access.
And it is on the front page. It's when you go to the Pembroke School Board, it's it's right there.
I told her, put it front and center so it was easy for people.
But I I do understand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
About the SharePoint thing that.
Yeah, I I went, it literally was three clicks to try to find it, not having an idea which way direction I had to go. That's when I called, I messaged Patty and then Ashley told me where it was. I went in, found it. And then the next click, SharePoint. I was like, you know, so, um, but that's great if it's up there now. Um, and one of the things is I pretty much, Amy stole my thunder here, but um
Yeah.
What I want to make clear, and this is not an excuse. I've been on the board the longest and I did not know this. I did not know anything about the audits. Um, and the one thing that is absolutely true about the audits is that the school board ultimately is responsible for those audits as well as superintendent. Um, so moving forward, putting a mechanism so when the audit's done, it gets reported to us. So we know at that point in time as per the goals that Andy's invested itself.
So that that's a great idea is to have it on the goal sheet because, you know, if you think back to 2019, yes, we all should have been noticing that we didn't have audits, but given all that we were dealing with, those are the little things that when you're used to just being handed something and it doesn't get handed to you, it's easy to to just sort of let it slip your mind. So I think having it on a goal sheet is a great idea because it's there every year. And, you know, the template that I think Melanie, Amy, someone set up, um, where you go in and review is also going to be very helpful. Um, and to Amy's point as well, we did talk to the consultant about the one thing that's hanging out there that's going to take a lot of time and that he's agreed to help us is some of the missing policies. So they'll say, you know, you have to have a policy that deals with GAZD E five hundred and forty-three or whatever. Um, that takes time. So he's going to help us with that. Look for some sample policies so that we can get those in place. But most of the other recommendations, I've been sort of talking to Amber as they've come along and like you said, you should in future audits see that, oh, now you are doing that. And the auditors have spoken to us and said, you know, we know you've put this in place, but we're auditing 2020 and it wasn't in place. So we have to note it, which makes perfect sense. You're right. At the end, I'm hoping as well as you are that there's everything that's in there has been addressed.
Anything else on audit before we jump? Okay, and I think that's, I think that's the end of um the other things that we didn't table. Uh, I think it's safe to put policies later. I don't think anybody really cares to stick around. See that. Okay.
You probably saw my page of policies and thought I lost my mind. Um, I may have. So for policies, um, Ashley and I, it's just the never ending issue of not being caught up. And every time we get a fall update from the School Board Association and a spring update, we get this whole list of policies that we need to update. It takes us away from going back to the, I think I got you through the eighties and we got rid of those. Now we're on to the nineties and I feel like if we don't have all of that, we're gonna, it's never going to get addressed. So I just want to have it on one separate sheet. And it, you know what? If it gets pushed out two readings, if it gets pushed out, that's fine. But at least we have a process that we know, you know, we we already had some on the list for second and third. We've got the bottom section is required by law that we don't have, so we have to get those on. And then the middle section, again, I moved us to the nineties to try to start dealing with some of those that can either be eliminated or um, you know, maybe optional and you decide whether you want to have even have the policy. But that's sort of, that was my thinking. And if that's okay, at least it's a a way to have all both of those things addressed, the ones we're missing that we have to have and the ones that are just really old and have been sitting there.
Okay, so can I, actually, do you still have comments?
Just a question that Carrie and I both have for some direction because obviously we can't tackle these all at once. Is the priority that you want us to look at first and what the board wants us to look at first is the ones that are required by law that we don't have? Is that where you want us to start?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And then um, I'm also happy to, if you guys want to do like a Google meet at some point and, you know, to talk about the older ones and I can work through like, okay, we have a new policy that addresses this or this is outdated. We don't need this. If that helps move it along, I'm happy to do that with you guys, too.
So could I challenge us, I guess? Um, this is a ton. So can, could we try collectively to be ready to vote on that that top section, the current things that are currently second, third, but at our next meeting? And then um, and then at least the third group, the required ones by the second February meeting that gets us past the public hearing and all that stuff. Um, but if we could do second February meeting and bang out at least those and, you know, if if we're on it, we get some of those nineties one done as well. But I think that if we can bang these one, two, three, four, five, six out next time. And then there's nine more in the required. If we could have those done by the end of February, we'd be in a lot better spot than we are now.
Let me ask someone a question. On the stuff in the, on the policies from the nineties, we're trying to get rid of those and replace them with what we have. What we we may have not already, we we we've not already replaced them.
It's some of both. So some of those may be policies in other places, yes, be redundant. And some of them, you probably have seen policies that are really procedures and you don't need a policy. And, you know, we may change a form and if you have a policy, it takes away the ability to change the form. So we just get rid of it. It's not a required policy. There are all sorts of those kinds of examples, too. And if you look on the sample policy, there it will tell you whether it's optional, required or recommended. And if there's nothing from the School Board Association in your drive with those letters, it means it's not even, it doesn't exist anymore in their manual.
And I'm certainly not going to tell you to how to do your committee job because it's one of them that I certainly don't want. Um, but if you, I think, I mean, you two know what you're doing. If you read through some of these and they're just blatantly obvious, like, I would say if you can note those ones and shoot us an email and be like, hey, guys, we can pass this one next time. No problem. It's, you know, it's super basic, then great. And it saves us a little bit of time. We can, you know, we'll glance at it. But but and then if you, on the other side, if you see ones where you're like, oh, you know, with my special ed lens on, this is problematic, you know, kind of flag those ones. And if we don't get all of these done on two twenty because there are ones that need massaging, no problem. If we don't get them done just because we didn't look at them close enough, then that's less good.
And I know we've looked at the top ones quite a bit. The only thing I would ask, just because she's sitting right here, can we have Jessica just look at that restraint and seclusion second reading one, two? Or have you already done that?
Always give those to Jess.
Because there's a lot in that and I tried to read through it and I'm like.
And Jess has been doing a lot of work with um leadership in the SAU too, when all the restraint and seclusion laws changed. I think the last piece we're waiting for is the DOE promised us a form months ago that we don't have. But we've made sure that these have been put in place in RSAU because it is a law.
Okay.
So whether or not you guys have the policy in place, we still follow the law.
Because I was looking up a lot of the new laws and I just wanted to make sure you've so we're okay to go forward.
Yes.
She's already seen that.
Yes.
Anything else on policy? All right. Let's knock it off. Um, I think we can do our public comment. That was quick.
Oh, I forgot Jason was over there. Do you want to tell us how your holidays were or?
All right, um. Okay, so we tabled eight B, which we will come back to later. So currently, so wait, um, do we need to add anything since we're C is still good. C will cover what? All right. Okay, um, then the board has need to go into non-public session in accordance with New Hampshire RSA ninety-one dash eight colon three, Roman numeral two, small letter C, which is matters which if discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the board. Uh, on a roll call vote to enter non-public at seven twenty P M. Carrie, Amy, Jean.
Yeah.
Melanie.
Yes.
And I'm a yes.